Okay. Let's do the lead just. Jason, please.
Sure.
Luke, what?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with whose majesty is the throne.
Before you do that, vacation pills.
Sure. Your gracious father, we thank you for bringing us here today.
Yes.
We ask for wisdom. We ask you if you'd help us just do your will and to please you and so guide us in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, can you have the announcement of items discussed in closed session, please?
Thank you, Chair. The board met in the closed session and closed session, we continue to the end of this open session meeting.
Thank you. Agenda approval. Any additions or deletions?
We'll make a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Okay, motion made by Supervisor Bridges. Seconded by Supervisor Alba. Is there anybody from the public? And then bring it back up here for a vote. All those in favor.
Aye.
Oppose. Okay, is there any public comment for items that are not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll close. Public. On the. On the agenda is reports. Uh, Mike, you want to start it off?
Sure. Uh, last week after our board meeting, I flew to San Diego and attended the Latco training and annual conference. And I learned a lot. I think I'll bring it back more quickly than I am first, but, uh, you know, good experience for the utilized information. That's it.
Yeah. Eric?
Okay, on the twenty-second, I went to the, uh, Reed's, uh, line, uh, main ceremony for the Glaston County Sheriff's Department, Susanville PD, and the Modoc Sheriff's Department. Then I also attended a Zoom meeting for cultural competency. After that, I left for Chico for a NorTech meeting on Thursday uh, for the Board of Directors of NorTech. And then yesterday I made it to the first five, uh, Lassen County meeting. And I canceled going up to Big Valley. I was feeling pretty under the weather. That's it.
Jason?
Sure. Uh, this Saturday is our Christmas bazaar down at the Doyle Community Center. All our seniors will have all their handmade goods, crafts, uh, bake sale going on. Also, our South County 4H will be there, uh, doing their bake sale as well. Uh, I wanted to give a big congratulations to Natalie Ruger for becoming our new Public Health Director. Um, confident she's gonna do a good job and the employees love her. So I'm glad to see everything going smooth over in HHS. I just, I think this is a perfect opportunity to look at combining the budget analysis job with the Deputy CAO. Um, the budget analysis job is a fully benefited thirty-eight dollar an hour job where Samantha McMullins already does our budgets and everything else. I've always felt like we were a little top-heavy in the administration department for the county. And I think the cost savings are definitely worth looking at. She does the job already, so I just feel like we should take a look. Um, a couple of weeks ago, before I got sick, I apologize that I wasn't here last, but, uh, had a good time with Congressman Malfa gathering petition signatures and, um, he put the impression that we can collect ballots and I explained to him that is not a good idea. Public perception is everything. I just want to make it clear, not a single ballot was collected. Everybody was directed to the nearest ballot drop-off locations that are fully secure. And like I tell everybody, we have one in Doyle, they're all under twenty-four hour surveillance, so. I wouldn't trust the mailbox, for example, but our county clerk and our reporters' office have those under twenty-four hour surveillance. So it's a safe place to drop off your ballots. And I do have the petitions for voter ID requirements. Since I got elected, I volunteered to run the polls down in Doyle because our seniors have done it for decades, decided not to do it anymore. And the first training I took, I was told it is illegal to ask for an ID when you come to vote. And I thought that was just insane to begin with because if you don't have a ballot, you could vote provisionally on in-person voting day. And I think it's important that voter ID requirements are required. So if anybody would like to sign that petition, let me know. I know, uh, I don't know why the threshold keeps getting pushed further, but when we were doing Proposition Thirty-Six petition signatures, only five hundred and eighty-five thousand were required. Now it's over a million. I think it's just kind of crazy. Anyhow, anybody to be interested in signing that, please let me know. And we got a NorCal EMS Zoom. I attended last week and, uh, big things coming there as well. Be attending a special meeting tomorrow. Um, with that, that's all I got.
Yeah, first off, I'd like to adjourn the meeting today in memory of Patsy Sherrill. She's a longtime resident in Big Valley, was a deputy sheriff for Glaston County for a long time, old Bill Sherrill. Certainly I'd like to make, uh, make that a German request. Uh, let's see. Then the B-Back meeting yesterday up there in Big Valley, that's the groundwater for the Big Valley Basin. Um, you know, the consultant we have now, it's light years ahead of the first guy that we had. We're looking at doing a basin boundary, uh, modifications. We took, uh, a lot of good scientific information from there about whether it mattered to determine if we want to send that forward to DWR. See about making that modification and then try to get it rescored. Um, using the third scoring system, see if they'll do that to maybe get us out of that program. Because I don't know if they will or not, they got us in there, so who knows? They've never let anybody out before. So who knows? But it's, it's kind of a crapshoot, but we're, I think it's worth, uh, worth the gamble if we can get out of it. Uh, so that's that. And then we have, uh, let's see, what else? On Thursday, the thirtieth, I, I'm sure that's what it is. I think there's a conflict at time, but that's what I was told, the thirtieth, the third. October thirtieth at four PM, it's in community hall, the, uh, Paul Rowan, I think Lamalfa, they're gonna be there with, I don't know if Lamalfa will be there himself or his rep to talk about the, uh, the wolf issue on Sierra Valley. They were able to eliminate the, the pack down in Sierra Valley that did all that devastation. And so hopefully they'll be there to talk about, hey, how they were successful in getting that done and. Anyway, so we'll be learning something there on how to be successful so we can get some of the other ones done. It's just kind of sad because, I mean, I feel bad for the Sierra Valley guys, I really do. They were devastated by these wolves down there. And they even had the strike force down there trying to protect them. The difference between that pack down there and the packs out across the other state is those packs here were killing on private ground, not in the open where you could see them. Like the Harvey pack and the Lassen pack, they're killing up on the national forest, you never see them. You, you're never gonna find the kills. The fishing game, they'll give you the points a day or two later. Wolf's a perfect criminal, by then they've eaten all the evidence, so they've done nothing. So you can never get a confirmed kill. So anyway, those are just some of the problems we have, a well to work with. Um, and then, uh, we have election day coming up here, guys. I hope everybody remembers to vote. I know there's only one thing on the item, but that's Prop Fifty. And if that path is, you know, wholly changing dynamics here and what we're able to get done at the federal level here, we have a good representative now. We might not in future. And it's gonna make it a lot tougher. So hopefully everybody votes no on, uh, remember to vote and they vote no on Prop Fifty. Then on November fifth, I'll be, uh, having to go to Sacramento for R A M meeting and R C and R C. And then we tap it off. Gotta get my notes here. The, um, on Monday, November the tenth, at nine-thirty, it's Big Valley High School gym. Uh, the color guard, the high school color guard, they're putting on a performance as well as a TK through sixth grade dance. And then their featured speaker is gonna be the Big Valley High School ninety-eight graduate, Chief Master Sergeant Chris Clark of the US Air Force. He'll be giving his presentation as far as the veteran working. And then the following day, on the eleventh, uh, the former Big Valley Cattlemen's, the Intermountain Cattling, they put on a lunch and for all veterans. So I would like to invite everybody who wants to attend, uh, for the water, both of those events. That's what I got.
All right, thank you.
Throw it back on you.
All right, um, I don't have, uh, too much to report on. Got to go spend the weekend with my, uh, grandsons. And that was an awesome time. So, um, we'll move on to, um, the G information and consent calendar.
I'd like to pull four and five, Mr. Trump.
Four and five?
Yes, sir.
Three. What? Three? Three? Is there anything else? Number two.
Number two?
Yeah. Okay, so I need a motion.
Make the motion ballots, pass the ballots.
Second. Okay. Motion made by Supervisor Alba, seconded by Supervisor Scanlon. Is there anybody from the public that wants to comment on that? Seeing none, we'll bring it back up here for a vote. All those in favor.
Aye.
Oppose. Okay. We are going to move on now to, uh, D one. Uh, the Congress Certain, and it's the Alliance for Workforce Development. On that. And, uh, please state your name for the record and, uh, and then would love to hear.
Wonderful. My name is James Cox. I'm the Business Services Manager for Alliance for Workforce Development. And we are, are, we are a service provider for Glaston County. I'd like to introduce my team. We have Christina Almiger, our boots on the ground for Glaston County, is a career advisor. And I have our Executive Director, Christine Suizua, and our Business Services Supervisor, Dean Draven, with us today. Does everybody have a copy of the handoff? Wonderful, I brought some extras in case. Absolutely. Good. Wonderful. Well, thank you, Supervisors, for allowing us to present today. And a special thank you to Supervisor Bridges for serving on our NorTech board.
You're more than welcome.
We are pleased to update the board on our twenty twenty-four, twenty-two, twenty-five activities for Glaston County. This is a reminder of what AFWD is. We are one of three service providers under the local workforce development board in NorTech. We provide workforce development programs and services in six of NorTech's eleven counties. Those include Butte, Glaston, Modoc, Nevada, Glaston, and Sierra. As an America's Job Center, California, once up. Wanted to go over quickly our unemployment figures for the year. It started quarter one, Glaston County was at six point zero percent unemployment in July of twenty-four. And California was at five point eight. Nation was at four point five. We ended quarter four in June, but the slight uptick, Glaston was at six point two percent employment, California at five. The United States as a nation at four point four.
Will you attribute that to?
Will you attribute that to? It's a huge question. So we've seen that so far in twenty-four, twenty-five, at the start of twenty-five, twenty-six. And the uptick of closures and layoffs in our manufacturing sectors. Employers are, are reporting that it's kind of a direct result of, of tariff position in that field. The slight uptick in unemployment. I know that there was, uh, the prison closure, a desert affected and those residual effects we continue to feel in our community. That could have something to do with that, the point for twenty-five, the yearly. That's a question I have there. We're a small piece of, of affecting that number. We have services or, or one of our main goals is to reduce the amount of people that are dependent on unemployment change programs and social services as well.
How do you mo-, how do you motivate people that don't want to work?
How do we motivate people who don't want to work? Our career services programs are designed to engage with the public and make, help people get work ready. Whatever that may be, if it's help interviewing, creating resume, or professional literature, or actually studying to prepare for industry trades, occupational skills licenses, and certificate programs, and work-based learning, apprenticeships, and on-the-job training. Literally everything we do is designed to help people get into the career path that's side. A number of, of, uh, our career advisors' goals are to motivate those individuals to get them work-ready. When folks come to us, it's, it's because of a need. They, they need a job or they need a better job. And we help them every single step of the way.
Yes, my question was, how do you get them off the couch to come into you?
Oh. Well, we do a number of events. We partner closely with Glaston Community College and, and we put on, you know, hiring events and, and we join community events and we engage with the public. Um, that helps us to get the word out, helps us to motivate individuals, but if they're on their couch, they gotta be at the event. Yeah, that's, so they need to take that first step and we help them rest of the way.
Okay.
Okay, a couple of program highlights. Uh, we have three main four-wheel programs, adults, dislocated workers, and youth. Throughout the twenty-four, twenty-five program here, we're able to assist thirty-eight adult and dislocated workers in Glaston County that receive training assistance funds, including fees and tuition, assistance with materials for classes, and on-the-job training, work-based learning. In our youth program, our youth program serves individuals seventeen to twenty-four years old, but barriers to employment. In program here, twenty-four, twenty-five, we're able to assist thirty-four Glaston youth clients in career readiness, job placement, on-the-job training, and supportive services in Glaston County. And we've reached the culmination of our twenty-twenty-one National Dislocated Worker Grant for the twenty-twenty-one Summer Wildfires last year that culminated and we were able to get some exciting figures of what we were able to do in the communities of Glaston and Plumas. And on this slide here, you'll see the, the culmination of the grant in total. We're able to assist in just wages invested in the community, almost two point six million dollars. And supportive. Individuals using that grant. Sorry.
How many of the two hundred were from Western County?
I didn't pull those figures and I regret doing that. Um, this was a Plumas and Glaston grant. Um, I believe about two-thirds of the individuals were from Plumas County. That's where the fire affected, uh, the Chester area was where we invested heavily. Um, and so I would wager a guess, right, about sixteen, sixty-six or so, uh, individuals from Glaston County. And there's a lot of crossover. Glaston and Plumas are so intertwined because of, like, Almanor, um, especially in that area. It's in the area, it's kind of a point between Quincy and Susanville, because of, like, Almanor, Chester area. And that's where the majority of our clients were served. Lots of folks travel from Glaston and from the other separate Plumas over to that area. Okay, we are services twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-five, by the numbers, slide here, culmination of our year's work. We were able to serve in Glaston County nine hundred and thirty-nine individual clients with job search, resume assistance, skills testing, assessments, classroom training assistance, work-based learning, on-the-job training. We offered forty-seven different workshops. Our workshops are virtual and free. You can do them in your jammies from home. They are on various topics from job readiness, job search skills, resume building, interview practice, and job fair prep. But in those, those two job fair prep workshops that we did, we were able to partner with Glaston College this year to put on a couple of wonderful events. And our summer job fair. Now, I'll talk about those two events later, and our career and transfer fair, um, that we were able to partner with them to put on. Our total unique Glaston County businesses served last year were ninety-three. We were service businesses with recruiting, job fairs, labor market information, human resources consultation, access to various on-top labor pools, and work-based learning placements, including O T T. Total number of services that we were able to provide to Glaston County businesses last year was five hundred and fifty-nine. And finally, the total we owe funding that we spent in Glaston County on participants, including on-the-job training, classroom training, and other work-based learning, was a hundred and eighty-six thousand, six hundred and eighty-one dollars.
Mr. Cox, I have a quick question. Last time you came and presented, uh, you had mentioned you could help with Class A certifications for our Public Works Department, uh, applicants. Um, I was, I asked Pete, uh, he's our Public Works Director. Um, uh, we had to send a guy to school to get his Class A certifications. And he said he'd reach out to you guys and he didn't get a response back. Are, are you gonna be able to help our Public Works Department for further applicants?
Absolutely.
And help fund their Class A classes?
Certainly.
For our employees? I know I asked last time you were here.
Sorry, if you don't mind, I can answer that because I work in the Susanville office. Um, we are able to assist, however, there are, um, a couple of things. I believe that phone call at the time, and I could be a hundred percent wrong, he was full-time working, um, at the time. I just didn't have qualifications at that moment, um, because he was full-time employee. Um, however, we can assist, there's just certain barriers that we need to talk about with, you know.
You need to talk to us.
Oh, sorry.
If you need help, they can come to the podium.
So, no, we, we then, when we get the qualifications of each candidate that comes in and asks for any kind of services, we definitely, if we have any questions on that, we rely, you know, to our administration, things like that. So there was one gentleman, I did not speak to him personally, however, in the Susanville office. It was, from what I gather, he was still full-time working, fully employed, um, under that timeframe. But yes, we do help with Class As. Um, I help at least two to three residents a year. Um, the biggest barrier that I see for Glaston County residents is when they call me, it's usually around the wintertime. And the closest, um, you know, Class A trucking school is in Reading. And the one that we really suggest for people who have never really touched a big rig, that, you know, usually the inspection is what gets them at the test. You know, that point inspection is very, very hard for some people. So American, um, trucking in Reading, they, they have a four-week course. So with that, it's four weeks consecutive, Monday through Friday, they come home on the weekends. Um, a lot of our residents have a hard time finding that timeframe to go down there. However, I know that, um, our college, you know, is still working on getting the trucks. Um, or, you know, with Hat, I'm Perry and Hat Creek and all them are still working on some things, there is a waitlist. However, we do also let anyone who's interested in trucking locally, but has a little bit of a transportation issue to go to the college connect to, because even if there's a waitlist, you know, that night course that is once or twice a week is very helpful for some of our, um, residents that can't get away. There is a week-long course in Reading at Jiffy's Truck School. However, we are finding, um, the succession, successful rate of our people passing, because it is a packed one-week course, um, is not as high as we would like. We do offer it. However, what we're finding is they won't pass the first time. And with that, um, initial training, it comes with one truck rental. And we're talking about four hundred, five hundred dollars each time a resident wants to rent the truck to take it again. And even in our outlining counties, we're finding some of the people who fail the first time and the second time, they're having just that much more difficulty. And then it becomes a financial issue of getting to Reading and then coming up, you know, because we're allowed, we are able to assist sometimes with that second truck rental. However, sometimes we are not, so then it falls on the participant.
So just to be clear, are, are our full-time employees that are not qualified to get assistance from Allied Workforce Development in order to get their Class A?
So there are a number of eligibility criteria that we have to meet in order to serve participants financially. And one of those is economic self-sufficiency. So if they're already at what's considered economically self-sufficient income, um, then it's, it's harder to qualify those individuals. Depends on family size.
Who's the professional economic sustainability?
I forgot the top of your head what that is. Thank you.
That's good. So, yes, we can help.
Ma'am, will you please state your name?
Yes.
And then, and then.
Absolutely.
Tell us.
So I'm Christine Suizua, I'm the Executive Director with Alliance for Workforce Development. And to answer your question, sir, we can help, but it depends on the individual. So if he's already, if the individual's working full-time and he's earning what we consider a self-sufficient wage, so that's a hundred and seventy-five percent above the L L S I L for California, we consider them already self-sufficient and they should hopefully be able to earn a living wage and be able to do the training. Now, there's a lot of caveats to that, though. So if, let's say, it's required for his job and he's not able to move up, there's some extra wiggle room for us to help that individual. So what I would say is definitely reach back out. Let's see if we can connect and see if we can make that work for the individuals in your Public Works Department.
Well, it sounds like the employee I'm, I'm referring to definitely met all the criterias. It's, I'm getting, there's no way he's making over a hundred and seventy-five percent.
Of the L L S I L. Yeah, so you should definitely come by and let's take a look and see if we can do that. We help dozens of individuals with Class H truck driving, but mostly our program is for those that are unemployed or what we consider underemployed. There are absolutely a few instances where we can help someone that's already fully employed, but it just depends on, you know, what it is they're asking for and what other criteria that they need to meet.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And, uh, in, in fact, there's a, a slide here, Glaston Client Training Programs Twenty-Four, Twenty-Five. The bulk of the classroom trainings that we're able to do in Glaston County were in the industry of transportation and truck driving. Exactly a third of the trainings we're able to do were for Class A, Class B, or heavy equipment operation. Okay.
So, uh, what happened? So you, you mentioned that, uh, that, uh, Hat, Hat Creek, you were able to help them? Is that correct?
So Hat Creek is partnering with the college and helping, you know, with getting, um, Class A truck driving going. Um, and so with that, from what I've been told in that, right now, if there's a little bit of a pause, is it's a trucking issue. So I know that they have partnered with our local other companies, our college, to kind of get that totally buttoned up so that we can serve more of our residents in that free Class A trucking school that they have started. There's just that little pause right now in our community college. However, there is a list going for people that are interested. And so we definitely refer to everybody, especially locally, too, like, they get you, get yourself on that waitlist while we're waiting too, because you never know. You know, um, Glaston College has been doing wonders with getting more trainings and stuff up for local residents.
And there, there are more options on the horizon for CDLA classes. In fact, I believe we're still working on getting our, our Feather River College, their new program, onto our eligible training providers list. And there's more to come, um, in that arena for sure. Glaston Clients Placed by Sector in Twenty-Four, Twenty-Five. This kind of goes to show where our individuals that we serve are ending up, what industries. And to see, to see the industry that needs the most need, across California, it's healthcare, and that's the majority of the individuals that we're serving. Other large industry sectors of placement include public administration, retail, accommodation, and construction, voice manager. Our Glaston Training Programs, I touched on this a little bit to, to highlight the, the transportation industry. Uh, that was the bulk, along with public safety, NMS, of the training programs we're able to provide to Glaston County residents. First, healthcare, makes the rest of the cake there with RN and LBN programs and healthcare, allied health programs, and six point seven percent of skill tiers. Glaston Business Sector served in Twenty-Four, Twenty-Five, and the bulk here is the healthcare industry. Plus some business sectors served in twenty-four, twenty-five and the bulk here is the healthcare industry. Followed by retail, public administration, agriculture, education, arts and construction industries. Our majority served business sectors in Lassen County. This next slide, I absolutely love it. During the twenty-first century, recently went from a word cloud to a bubble clouds, a little easier to read. And this shows the frequency of businesses served, individual businesses in Lassen County. Uh, as you can see here, healthcare, that was part of that industry pipe, less nursing and rehab center. Northeastern Rural Health, the largest um blips on that, on this little. Bubble cloud, all the last in college, Nobles Construction, Ponponas, Susanville, Indian Rancheria. This final slide here is our in the community. This is like the funnest thing we get to talk about now is the, the actual impact that we made in the community for individual clients. And um our partners and organizations. I'll talk about some of the community events we're able to do. The center picture here, the largest one is our. Career and transfer fair that we're able to partner with Blossom Community College, put on. At this event, we had well over a hundred um job seekers attend. And I believe we had thirty-six employers at that event. And then earlier in the year, I couldn't find a place on the base to put it, but we had our, our summer job fair, that one was even larger. Uh, with over two hundred job seekers and both supporting employers at Lawson College. That was our inaugural partnership event. With Lawson College to put on their community job fair. It was a humongous success. We'll definitely be putting them again in the future. The top right photo here is a workshop we're able to do for the staff at Nobles Construction Components. That was a, a wonderful kind of event. We requested a, a workshop on some cultural competency. And we were able to provide a workshop to them, um, to all twenty-nine of their employees. It's super successful. There's a little picture in the top right of Blue Ox. We've partnered with Blue Ox Bakery and, and um. And assisted them at the opening of the new facility. Um, in the manufacturing sector, they've been a great partner. We're getting people placed into industry. Um, and we continue to work with them, active on the job training. Both of their locations. And now I'll turn it over to Christina to talk about some of the client impact.
Hi Christina, I'm here again. So I'm going to talk about a couple of the participants and a little kind of. Blurb about what they, you know, were able to get and assisted for this. So there is. On the left-hand side, um, a young lady in blue, looks like she's in her car. Um, she, this young lady came to us through the youth program. Um, she went through the training at L and R for her C and A. Um, after completing that training, she realized that she liked more of the front office. Kind of medical. So in between job searching with her, we were able to. Um, have her work in our office under a work experience. Uh, just a temporary of a twelve weeks is what we had her doing, kind of running the front. Customer service, things like that, helping with our job walls. Um, with that, she is now fully employed with one of our old local doctors who don't believe in computers. So which is the skills that she learned with us. She's doing amazing and thriving in their small practice. And so she definitely was appreciated for us as well as, you know, she knew she wanted to go in the medical field. And she just needed to find her niche. So she's definitely a very good success story of, you know. Finding the best placement for her. Um, we have a gentleman that is on the phone in front of his computer at the bottom left. He was um a veteran who was underemployed. He was laid off. Um, let go from one of our local fast food industries. Um, and he just wasn't able to find um a job, you know, especially with him losing his job. He was. That definitely looking. Um, we came in, we sat down, talked to him. I went over some of the stuff he did in the military. Or he was a Navy man, I believe, and some of the things he did previous. And um, we were able to put him in an on-the-job training with Ken's Repair as a dispatcher. And after his O J, um, J T training was finished, he. Became fully employed with them as well as he is now currently training on how to fix the appliances as well. So he's gaining more skills. Um, he is very grateful and he is um just another success story. And the last one we'll talk about is a young man with glasses right on the top. He um came to us, he was in the youth program as well. He had a very hard time with just kind of getting his foot in the door. He was putting in tons of applications, never getting a call back. We sat down with him, um, went over some skills, resume building skills as well as interview skills. He came in for almost a month and a half, every interview he had and did mock interviews with us. And um, he got over some of his own barriers and now he is fully employed and he is grateful. And so he is definitely one of the other success stories that we have. So. There's a bunch of them that, you know, we've had, but those are just three. Yes, at the very bottom, um, I also assist with training. So I. Currently, right now, I'm serving almost sixteen would be a number I'd feel. You know, confident giving you, I'm helping with um L V N's locally as well as R N's right now in their trainings. Um, I assist with everything financial aid, can't get them because you know, then it's very hard to work in the L V N program right now. So if. They still need help after financial aid, E O P S, and they need help with books, some new uniforms, they only get a couple. Um. We have assisted them through their trainings and so I have six R N's that I've been assisting and helping. Through the first cohort um that we have right now that's graduating in December. So. That's really exciting because a first R N class in Lassen County will be. Fully graduated and ready to hit the hospitals, hopefully locally and definitely get us, you know, some more nurses. So. Yeah, that's actually really exciting for us because, you know, it's been a long journey and a hard one for the first. The first class is always the hardest, you know, you get, they're getting over all the humps for the rest of us. So.
The last in college has been an amazing part, one of our strongest programs in Lassen County for sure. Yeah, that wraps up our presentation. It was a great year in twenty-four, twenty-five, but we prefer to better year this year. Any questions?
Yeah, I got one question. What's your L V N or your nursing program out there? Was you guys, I mean. You guys, it looks like you got a pretty good class there. Is it going to expand or is that about capacity or where, where they at on that?
Um, so last time I was at one of the meetings with the college with Christie Myers and all them. Um, I think they're just kind of getting their footing in with now they have the L V N program. That they've had forever. They're having an L V N bridge program for some of our L V N's that. You know, have already been working in the workforce and then they just want to get over that hump for the R N's. So there's a bridge program as well as a R N program and then they're doing everything they need to do to. Finish for our dental assisting program in Lassen College. So that's um pretty exciting. So from what I understand, I think they cap at thirty. Um, each cohort for L V N's. Um, but their. Uh, R N's, I believe is about the twenty range, but there's going to be in the next class starts this January. So. We're definitely getting the bugs out because it was their first, you know, year for the R N program. But yeah, so they have L V N, they have L V N. What they call bridge um program, which is I'm already an L V N and I just want to get my other credentials to be an R N. As well as the R N program. So they got about three different ones going simultaneously.
When are you going to start their dental hygiene school?
They were saying like, they didn't give an exact date. I know that they're still getting, um, they have to have a dentist. On staff, I believe. There's certain criterias they have to go. Um, the hy- the hygienist is going to be a little bit more because it's a little bit more intense for, you know, everything that they need to have that. Should be up and running out of college. However, dental assisting is going to be in the near.
Yes, I don't, I don't have a question.
Just have a comment to make. If any of the rest of the board hasn't been down to the facility. That, that where the, you know, last in the Alliance for Workforce Development. Take, take the time and go down there and, and go on a tour and uh. You'll find some questions to ask when you're there and the boots on the ground can answer them really well. And I, I just really appreciate all that you guys do. And uh. Kudos to Lassen College. I really give a lot of kudos because starting that nursing program and, and now they're expanding it. But what an asset for Lassen County and for, for you guys. It's just, it's a win-win all the way around. So.
And then the slideshow, the third slide in the show's our location. If you guys don't know where we're at, have to add this in here. All right, one sixteen, twenty-six, the main street in Susanville. We're pretty cool. You'll check it out.
Okay, so the, um, so on the nursing program, how, how are you guys uh? Helping with, with that program? What? So are you creating funds for these students? What is, what's, how's your partnership with them?
Yeah, workforce innovation opportunity, our funding allows us to help with occupational skill certificates and training. Um, so what we do, we help them through the journey from enrollment to, to get through the program and then we job develop for them. Things that we can assist with, with supportive services for like scrubs or, or shoes or stethoscopes, whatever they may need. And then actual classroom training funding goes towards like books. Um, and sometimes our central tuition financially doesn't cover that and um they have a number of, of. Software programs that they have to maintain, including Kaplan platform and N flex fees for their testing. Those are things that we help with as well. And after they graduate, well, in the healthcare field, usually by the time you pass your test, you've already got ten job offers, but we help with job placement if it's needed.
So um, so what's it going to take for um? For our department heads to uh come down and uh. And, and get help with our uh employees uh. Advancement, because we're sending them out for uh. For class A, uh, we're sending uh people to uh, uh, the academies. You know, how, how are you guys going to help us do that?
Absolutely. So the best way to engage with us in that regard is provide what's called a program referral. Or you can just send them down to our office, we have the information, schedule and eligibility and then take appointment. Able them individually to assess whether, whether or not we can help them, what we can help with.
Yeah, cool. Yeah, I just, I just want to thank you for, I know I've heard a lot of good stuff from people that are coming in private. And you guys help them place them with jobs and everything else. But I just want to reiterate what our chairman is asking, like we, we, we've got a deputy. On the agenda today, we're going to send to school and I, I just hope I can, uh, the public works department, they're making around twenty bucks an hour. So if they're going in for a class A, just because they're employed with us, there's no way they make this. This threshold. I just hope you can help with their schooling and everything else. I know we talked about this last year. And I just hope next time Pete calls or the sheriff, for example, we got it, we got a guy that's. On the agenda today, maybe you guys can help with that.
Yeah, I just think it's within this morning. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Thanks for coming in.
Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you guys.
Okay. So we'll move on to uh G. And uh. G two. Was, was um.
G two is what?
Was me, Michelle.
Yeah.
And um.
Oh, yes, I know.
Uh, Neely, uh, doing the, um.
You do it.
Well. Or making the motion. So I.
Okay.
I. I don't usually make the motions.
I know. That one I know. Which, um, which number was that or which item was that one? I found another error too. I thought it was for the adjourned memory.
Yeah.
Oh, the proclamation. Okay. Okay, I'll fix that. Yeah.
I know, I don't know who, who did that.
No, I, it, I, I have it. I just clicked the wrong. You guys are like, how my program works, you guys are lined up in order. So if it's, if it's.
So I was first.
You're always first on the list. So if it's supervisor two or supervisor four, it, anyway, I'll fix that. And then also, since you pulled those minutes, um, update. Um, also on the minutes, the adjourned memory at the end, I changed the name.
Okay.
In the on agenda, I spoke, I didn't catch the very end when it says that.
Right.
The meeting is adjourned at, so I updated that too. So there were two errors that needed to be corrected.
All right. And, and then uh. And then I don't know about the auditor uh controller thing. We got it under bear.
I fixed that too. Yes, clearly I had, clearly I had an issue that day. So that's been corrected. I'll bring on the minute, I won't have you sign the minutes until later with the corrections for that one. Okay.
So.
With those correct, Mr. Chairman, I would move my approval by.
Uh, supervisor Alba made the motions. Supervisor Bridges seconded. Anybody from the public? Seeing none. We'll bring it back here for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed, most from passes. Okay, number three.
Item G three. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I asked for this to be pulled too. This was under uh, item H four. Same problem, uh, name shot, just been screwed a little bit. I've talked to Park about it. You got those changes, Michelle?
Yes, they've been updated.
And so anyway, so with those changes, I would move to approve of item G three as well.
Okay, supervisor. Alba. Make the motion, supervisor Bridges seconded. Uh, anybody from the public? Seeing none, we'll bring it back up here for a vote. All those in favor?
All right.
Oppose. Okay, we're moving to G four.
I pulled this, Mr. Chairman. I just seen twenty-seven cents a gallon and thought, is this a typo or?
So where we are.
Oh, above the mark, okay.
Yeah, which was that?
Yeah, I was, I was really.
I want some of that.
Yeah. It's probably four fifty this one, here's break now.
Yes, Mr. Stan.
Uh, Pete, there weren't any other bids?
So I have an email response to Mr. Stanley. He was asking about the, why we only have one bid for both of these fields. So we actually, I was incorrect. We actually bid it out three times. So um. Uh, sometimes this happens where you almost have to go to the office. And a little bit at which and watch it fill it out. So. We had to follow up with them three times. We did have a second bid come in um for the propane for our third bid round, but it came in a day late. So we just sent it back. So, um. We have approximately five to seven um vendors for the propane that we send them to. With the fuel oil, I think it's three or four better and we sent a bid package. And as I said, we not only notice it in the newspaper, but we actually will send it directly to, to those vendors. So.
So Harvard, any point there? For the boss.
No, it's, and we'd like to have, you know, like to see what, you know, the bids on with the, or around under margins. So. Yes, didn't forget that. He said to know.
Okay. I need a motion.
I've never proved a vitamin before.
Alba seconded by supervisor Bridges. Anybody from the public? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back up here for approval. All those in favor? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back up here for approval. All those in favor, opposed, motion passes. Okay, H five, string, G five, G five.
Yeah, same thing. Pete already answered mine.
Okay, is that a motion?
I'll make a, what's that? I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, supervisor Bridges made the motion, supervisor Ingram seconded. Anybody from the public? Seeing none, we'll bring it back up here for a vote. All those in favor, opposed. Okay, motion passes. Okay, so we are moving on to. H one. Pete, you're back up.
Good morning, workday board members. Alright, so this is the first two items where the road department is purchasing some. Replacement equipment for some very old equipment. So the first one is. The pack up. So we have a nineteen eighty-seven case by David Backhoe. Uh, of course, it's got a lot of hours on it, a lot of wear and tear, and it's also not. So, uh, this is a purchase through a cooperative purchasing agreement, which is the Omni. Um, you know, B three Empire Cat, the total amount is one hundred sixty-three thousand and six hundred and fifty-three dollars and no sense on that. Funding is um, budgeted in for um, going. And this particular machine is actually sitting on the lot over, you know, so he will be able to um, get this fairly quickly. But it's not gonna happen for a bill that. So the warranties for these are actually negotiated as part of the contract. Um. So we get the standard two-year, two thousand hours, which basically covers the whole machine. Uh, through this omni pricing, we'll get an extended warranty that covers powder train, hydraulics. Technical, which is like if you have codes or whatever, something like that, help troubleshoot. That's a seven, seven years or four thousand hours for that extended warranty. So that's. Not bad for this. Don't normally put as like our backhoes, we don't run them probably as much as like a a construction company might, but um. It's why we're still running that nineteen eighty-seven, but um, they do get used by a bit, so.
Where's this one going to be stationed at?
This is for the, here in Susanville, for this district, yeah.
We have a percent tax for this.
You have to pay it for all of them. Because this is our place of um, business.
It's our address. Making a point.
That's it? Okay, uh, so uh. Two, uh, for the uh, car program, are are we able to use any of the? The money from uh, the installation? Or on, you know, since it doesn't make car in in that?
We can, uh, yes, trying to remember how that, they usually prioritize it to agriculture. I believe in replacing that equipment and then if there's stuff towards the end of the fiscal year, whatever cycle they work on. They can work with us because we talked about it for some of our, well, builds and grounds equipment, stuff like that. Yeah. I don't think they have a large sum of money to to work with on that either. So.
You have a battery powered.
Yeah.
That, yeah.
Talk like that. So, yeah, and then, and then uh. So, and then the. The other backhoe be surplus?
Yeah, sometimes we surplus some, um, or we'll kind of. We can sometimes idle them down. It depends what the car will let us do. If we keep under a certain amount of hours, we can still kind of. Keep them on our equipment list.
Um.
What should be nice?
Depending if you do say it's like for special snow removal or something like that, you know, just keep it under certain enough hours of stuff, but. It's. Uh, it's a good old, it's a good old backhoe. I don't know if, you know. It might even go on a, you know.
Okay. Yeah, need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of a backhoe from Empire Cat to the uh, Omni Cooperative purchase agreement. An amount of one hundred sixty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty-three dollars.
Okay. Uh. Motion made by supervisor Scanlon, second by supervisor Bridges. Anybody from the public? Seeing none, bring it back up for a vote. All those in favor, opposed. Hey, motion passive. Hey Pete, you're up on.
Then another piece of equipment for the uh, road division. This is a motivator to. It's a new motivator, replaced in nineteen eighty-seven. Cat one thirty-two motivator. Oh, same, same thing. It's uh, recently in use of life. Got a lot of wear and tear and hours on it and uh, not card compliant. And this one is a little bit more, but it's less than the last one that we purchased. Year and a half ago. Um, I think the. COVID pricing had pushed everything up. Seems like pricing's come back down a little bit. This is under five hundred thousand dollars. It's four hundred sixty-seven thousand, five hundred twenty-nine dollars. It comes with um, a package where it's got a front plow blade on it. And it's also got a side plow for benching um, as well. So this will be, I believe this one lands here. Now, this would be west, so this one's got the new one. Can't remember which one we're sending this to. Maybe it'll be going to Beaver. Um. This one, so um. And it's got a warranty. It's got a little bit different warranty. Um, doesn't quite have is, it's got the basic uh, twelve months, two thousand hours on this one. And then the extended one is five years, five thousand hours. Typically, our our motor graders do get a lot of, a lot of hours and a lot of, I don't know. Not only these, plows on the water, but great roads and stuff.
Eight hundred miles of gravel road, how many miles of gravel road?
Over four hundred. Eight hundred plus. Brownland paved throughout the county.
And we have to pay the city one percent sales tax on this, even though it's gonna be located in Beaver.
Here, one hundred percent. I don't have my road superintendent in town, but uh.
He's in a port here since he has to pay the sales tax.
So we're paying the city for these two pieces of equipment. We're paying them over sixty-three hundred dollars. And the uh. It's just so awesome. And can you get us out of this? It describes me at the wall, we're paying one percent.
I'd have to look into it. You'd not make any promises that that could, that could occur.
Anyway, maybe you can get us out of this because it just, it drives me up the wall and then we go to transportation and they want all their money for their no diggy roads and. But I mean, which is neither at the same extent. We've got way more of miles of road to cover. We can't. Just, it drives me up the wall. It's an eternity. I don't know how to get out of this, but.
I'm also gonna take.
It's only a burr under my sun if anybody has a gun.
I just.
It's a big bird though.
Yeah, maybe Pete could place the order just outside of the city.
Well, I I can take a look at it and provide some uh, legal opinion on whether or not there's any avenues to to get out of it.
It's crazy.
Yeah.
You have a comment?
I just wanted, I'm impressed that the price has gone down. That's something you don't usually see. That's a nice grater with both blades. That's a compliment on that.
No, that's, but yeah, they need those. It works so. Really well to do with machines here. They're nice.
Gotta have it for the dirt roads. They've been doing a really good job.
And uh. And where's the money coming for the, the, the two pieces of equipment out of?
It's out of our our road um, fund budget. So with this, now we get our fiscal year budget. We have approximately a million dollars in there for capital home equipment. So. We're looking to try to get some replacement pickups as well. So you may see us back. Hopefully sooner than later with um, some purchases for those as well. So.
Is this one on the lot also?
No, I believe this one's got a a lead time on it. So. If we're lucky, we might see it, you know, springtime. It's not as far out as they used to be. Because we, when we order and we like, when we order those, um. The plow groups on that, that's kind of an add-on. So that also extends over the time for, and the side bench and plow. Comes from another, another vendor that Cat then brings together. So.
Yeah, we need that benching.
Need a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of a motor grater from Empire Cat through O M N I A. Cooperative purchasing agreement in the amount of four hundred and sixty-seven thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine dollars.
Okay, motion made by supervisor Bridges. Second by supervisor Ingram. Is there anybody from the public? Seeing none, we'll bring it back up here for a vote. All those in favor, opposed, motion passes. Okay, we're moving on to H three.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Lieutenant Gray with the sheriff's office. Um, I have uh, a yearly application and resolution to apply for. Voting funds through the California Voting and Waterways. Um, attached is the application resolution. We're asking for approval and signature. Questions?
What do you need some money for?
Voting.
Voting, is it gonna maintain the boat? So is it gonna help with buoys or?
Yeah, safety equipment, uh, the boats themselves, maintenance. Or the, our voting people, our reserves that go out and patrol the waterways um, for their. Time, uh, safety equipment, everything. Insurance on the boats. Or restore them, electricity, stuff like that.
So uh, did, did you guys have to uh, put the the extension on the uh, adjusting boat ramp? It's uh, up eighty delay. Did, did some of that money come from that or did that come from the Forest Service?
They haven't, still no.
John McGarver, Sheriff Corner. We actually have nothing to do with the boat ramp and we paid no money towards it. That's all funded by the Forest Service. The projects that we're talking about, like Lieutenant said, if we're talking about, we have a refurbishment on one of the boats this year that we're gonna be, one of the upgradings on Eagle Three, which is the smaller white jet craft. We have, you know, projects, we actually have another boating deputy. So we now have two for the first time in the last few years. And then uh, Greg Berry out of West Woods taking over, helping doing the boats. We always have things like buoy replacement, equipment replacement. Things break, they break down, especially now with the extended, you know, season going into February. We have to put boats into practice on lake, on the lake when we didn't used to. Sometimes things freeze and break. Um. Just various different costs. So renewal of the thing, we're hoping that we can actually, you know, when we max out the funding this year, we can go back to getting the program up to where it was five, ten years ago. So it's a continued buildup.
Yeah, I just noticed the uh, extension on the uh, on the boat ramp up there. When I took uh. That took a ride up there the other day and uh, so I. You know, it was something's moved.
No, I, that's a good question. It's not, I know it's not us. So.
All right.
I don't know who paid for it. I'm assuming the Forest Service.
Well. But I like it.
Most people probably will. It gets a little sketchy out there as the water lowers throughout the years.
Well, I can make a motion to adopt the resolution and approve the application for program participation on. Twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven fiscal year and authorize the sheriff to execute the application.
Second. Okay, motion made by, oh. Yes.
Well, go ahead and figure, but I want to make a question.
Okay. Motion made by supervisor Scanlon, second by supervisor Bridges. Is there anybody from the public? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna bring it back up here for further discussion.
So on this, under your proposed uh, program cost. Number six, you have less boat taxes. So that's like, oh, a little over twelve thousand. Is that? A credit from the state, the boat taxes that you give me a discount on this or is this your boat taxes or what is this?
That's an approximate that we're assuming is going to be, go towards the taxes for the boat. Yeah.
So these are taxes quite throughout the state and this is Laston County's portion of it?
Correct.
It goes to this?
Yes.
And is that the only? Benefit we get out of the, the boat tax? Or do we get other benefits throughout the year in different areas? Is this the only area we get? You know?
So, not off the top of my head, I know that there are other benefits we do get from different taxes, whether it's luxury taxes on boats or different things. This is the one that goes directly towards our grant and is able to sustain the voting program as it currently, as it currently exists. Those, that money goes towards that.
Okay. And then my other question was, is you have your uh, your area of the waterways to be patrolled, you have area in square miles. Is that in a full state? Because Eagle Lake, it hasn't been full for a month, so forty-four miles for Eagle Lake, is that what is?
That full coal. That's when it's at full coal.
That's when it's like a little stuff on the highway.
Yeah, what, I don't know about all the way up to the highway, but typically when it's considered full, then yes, those are the square miles for.
Okay, all right. I didn't know if you did it pretty year-to-year basis or that was.
We have to account for it as if it's full every year.
Okay. Except. And that's for all the lakes.
Oh, yes.
Those are my questions that I had.
All right, anybody else? Okay, seeing none, bring it up here for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hey, motion passes. Okay. Lori, do you have anything for us?
Do not. I'll see you back in close.
Okay.
Just one question.
Yes.
Um, you know, last meeting, you had a five hundred thousand cable. When is that gonna be, so just come back?
Uh, next agenda.
Okay.
Yeah.
That was my question too.
Which will uh. Yeah, be a minute, but yeah.
Okay, that's fine. That's good.
Okay, so, anybody else? Okay. We are going to uh, at this time, we're going to go into uh, closed session.